I'm calling our January meeting to order. Thank you all for having allowed us to shift the date to this particular night. Let's rise to the pledge of allegiance. Okay, thank you. All right, Irene, let me first turn it to you and to Todd for the financial report.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. A good evening, everyone in the audience here. So we're halfway through the fiscal year, and at a high level, we've received about forty-six percent of the budgeted revenue and spent about forty-two percent of budgeted expenditures. Thus far, there hasn't been any capital expenditures. With respect to operating expenditures, we haven't spent as much in terms of street surface resurfacing or snow removal. Nothing has been set aside yet for, or should say, spent yet for rain scape supplemental funding or legal counsel as much in relation to Corso and the farm women's market projects. But winter is done, not done yet, and the projects, farm women's market and Corso is not done yet. So just letting you know that in terms of monthly budgeting, just where things are at. But overall, we're on track. And in the coming weeks, I'm going to be working with Todd, our town manager, to start putting together materials for next year's budget. Actually, that's already begun by Todd. So that's my report.
Todd, do you have anything you wish to add?
I don't, thanks.
Any questions, my colleagues? I just have, I just have one I'd like to ask, which is on the wind payments. I guess we saw like ninety-five hundred or so has been spent. Our total for the year is like thirty-five, thirty-six thousand is what we've paid here. Is that right? Something in that bracket?
That's right.
How come we've only paid one so far?
Because the other three are due February, May, and June.
Ah, it's not done. Oh, right. It's done as in accordance with when, by, as a deduct from what we otherwise receive in our quarterly estimation. We don't pay on a quarterly basis.
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
One, one quick question if I can add. Just, can you give us an update on what our reserves are currently? And then does that include, and also adding on the ARPA money?
I don't know if I can do it off the top of my head, but our audited fund balance was, boy, I, can I give those figures to you tomorrow?
ARPA is two point four.
And?
ARPA is two four. Are we still hovering at twelve? Okay.
We're around, around twelve.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. Thanks.
Okay.
Stable.
Bernie, I think your mic's off.
Town manager's report, please.
Thanks. I'll review some of the initiatives undertaken by staff over the last month. In addition to assisting with several of the major projects, including Corso Chevy Chase rezoning redevelopment and farm women's market parks development project, both of which we discussed tonight. Staff also continued to manage Zimmerman Park redevelopment project and Coquelin Run stabilization project. Dave will brief the council on both of those initiatives later this evening. Staff also communicated with Montgomery County Department of Transportation regarding a requested and agreed upon storm drain inlet installation at, for, at Oak Ridge and Thornapple and Maple and Thornapple as part of an effort to improve drainage in that location. We've also followed up with them about their continued storm drain maintenance based on the survey that we have performed with an independent contractor to identify needed maintenance for our storm drain inlets in town. They began that effort, Montgomery County Department of Transportation began that effort prior to the holidays and said they would pick it up again after the holidays. So we followed up with them to figure out when, in fact, they're going to restart that effort. Haven't heard anything yet, but I'll let you know when we do. Staff oversaw the completion of the townwide leaf collection service, and we completed the FY twenty-four state aid for police protection grant application with the state. We also continued to address parking concerns and traffic issues around one this school. Staff assisted the Public Services Committee with addressing issues related to the proposed slowdown and stop campaign, which will be discussed tonight. We also provided some feedback to the Climate and Environment Committee regarding the Resumery Garden proposal, which will also be discussed this evening. Other highlights is that we've continued to redesign, to manage the redesign of the website. Unfortunately, it's taking much longer than we anticipated, given some restructuring that's occurring at the, some turmoil potentially that's occurring at the, at our web host and developer. And, but we're making pretty good progress, and we hope to have something to present to the council, hopefully, next month, potentially.
Right.
Um, other than that, just an update on deployments of LED stop signs and radar speedboards. We, as the council knows, have three LED stop signs already deployed in the field, and we, two new ones are arriving on Monday. We're going to deploy those at some of the locations where we have, we've identified that are worthy of, of those signs, specifically westbound Stanford of East and eastbound Leland at, at East. For the radar speedboards, we have four in hand. One, as you know, is on northbound East. One is going to be deployed on a trailer, will be a mobile radar speedboard. Initially, it'll be deployed on West Avenue, facing northbound before Stanford. And we have two others that are reserved, and we ordered those in anticipation of allowing residents to request the deployment of those based on the revised policy that the council approved. We've also cleaned up some of the do not enter signage at Stanford and West and added wrong way signs. We did that last week. And as you've seen, we've also undertaken some significant office improvements. Phase two will be more of a effort to determine how to reconfigure the office space and put in new carpeting and new lights. So that's forthcoming as well. And that concludes the staff report.
Hey, thank you. First, I'm very pleased with the new acoustical panels that are here in the sound hall. I think they make a difference.
They do. They make a huge difference.
Since, since you, Todd, by every right, enjoyed a full month vacation. Congratulations to you. I'm glad you did it. But also, the town staff performed very, very well. And Dave, thank you very much for your effort. John Lloyd, Miguel, Trevor, everybody really took care of things and I think handled it very well. So it's comforting to know the town manager can take a vacation and things don't fall apart. That's a, that's a good sign.
That's good. That's good. Very good. I, yeah, they've, they all did a great job. And they're very grateful.
Okay. Time now for public comments. Are there any residents who would wish to address the council at this time? Sure. You need to go there and speak to the microphone. So please give your name and address, and the mic is yours.
Well, first, a happy new year to all. My name's Adam Arkell. I live at.
Could you speak up a little bit?
Yes. My name's Adam Arkell. I live on Meadow Lane, seven oh one five Meadow Lane. I came here tonight. I wanted to come and express appreciation to the town council for the very effective letter last month that was sent to Corso. I thought it was a great letter, as I wanted to express appreciation for that. I saw the response from Corso that was posted yesterday or the day before. And I'm certainly very pleased. I wanted to come and say, this, it looks like tremendous progress has been obtained from Corso, particularly with respect to the building height issue. And I, I wanted to come and express appreciation for these efforts.
Thank you very much. You can come back and say that as often as you wish. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Are there any other comments? Going once, twice? I don't see anybody else on the screen. Okay. So with that, we will turn to council discussions. We have no variances. And I'll start with just a couple of minutes as I'm the liaison to the committee and have dealt a lot with Corso. The, we have just received finally the response from the developers that was posted just yesterday. They had initially said that they were, the initial date for the resubmission was December twenty-third. When they did not meet that date, we actually took it to be a good sign because it was for them to really do the work to take seriously our comments, they would obviously need more time than they could possibly have been able, had to do that work by the twenty-third. I think we all feel what was really very important was that we, we were able to garner the support of the planning staff. And so when they, the planning staff put in their comments back on December seventeenth, in respect to the first resubmission, and we had filed our letter that, Adam, you just referred to, the planning staff just said very simply, we support the position of the town of Chevy Chase in regard to heights. That single sentence was incredibly important. And I think that's what really got the attention of the developers to realize that the town and the planning staff were aligned on this issue, and they had to take it seriously. So we are very pleased that that was, they did take it seriously and did a lot of work, but also were pleased with that alignment with the planning staff. So that was all good. Last night, there was a meeting of the special committee. I was not able to make it, but Rich and Irene were. Is there anything you wish to report on the conversations?
Yeah, Irene, jump in whenever, whatever you want. The committee was generally pleased with the resubmission of the, of the rezoning application. And they supported the revised heights enassing as depicted in those new submissions. There were a couple of other minor things that they would like to see. Still, we didn't see any cell tower images, and so we need to get that from the developer. And after the developer has some time to look at the reconfigurations of, because of that, those lowering of those heights on the, on the perimeter, they'd like to see an updated gross square footage and unit count in there as well. And they were also, they had also asked to, to the developer to show the phase, what the phase one and phase two build outs would look like. And the phase one is all of the back buildings and the gate, and then the front buildings would be the phase two. They were going to leave that open. And so they had some questions about that and, and some suggestions about leaving the trees while they, the phase, phase one is, is, is after the phase one is completed. But in general, they were very, very supportive of the, of the rezoning, of the resubmission for the rezoning.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, on the northwest corner, which is the, a part of the project that's the closest to a particular resident, the recommendation from the committee was to keep it to what was originally proposed, given that it isn't, that their, their January, if you will, submission wasn't as compatible. But overall, they, they, exactly as Richard's saying, they felt that this new projection and, and height is a lot more compatible with the neighborhood. And they were also very pleased with the fact that, that the, there will be, you know, kind of a new traffic or vehicle study and, and parking study as well. So, so overall, felt that there was tremendous progress. Totally concur that because the planning department was so aligned with what the, the town wanted to see, that things seemed to shuffle into place. There's no updated timeline as of yet for when comments will need to be, you know, submitted by the town or anyone else on this, nor when the hearing examiner will look at the, or hear, you know, what it is. That's the, but I suspect, we kind of suspect it might fall into March or, or April, depending on availability. So.
Todd, have you heard anything further about resetting the date? Originally, it was the, the, the planning board public hearing, I think, was supposed to be something like February ninth, but that was only if the resubmission had been made on December twenty-third. We don't know whether the slippage is day for day or something more or less, right? We just don't know at the moment.
That's correct. Yeah, Grace has not. She actually sent me an email this morning indicating that the new documents, the rezoning, the final application documents were on the DAIC, but she indicated that she did not yet have a, a new schedule for consideration for the planning, either the planning board hearing or the hearing examiner hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
I do, I, I do want to make a clarification on that northwest corner. They, they didn't have, they had no objection to leaving the northwest corner the way it was. They, they did not want, they, they however, did not want to say, they preferred one of the, they said, let the contract.
Worry about that. All right. I guess what I would, I'd like to propose, I think we need to, this is all very helpful, and I'm very grateful the committee met so quickly. And I think, Todd, thank you for getting the town criers out so quickly as well. We'd only received that information Friday night, got it out on Tuesday, which is essentially the next, the next working day. And also, I hope residents will take note that we've provided a lot of distinct links to individual, individual pieces of their application so that people can be guided to what we believe to be the most relevant and what they would want to see, which doesn't mean they shouldn't look at everything, but at least could look at some of the most important documents. I'd like to suggest that we proceed in a measured way in terms of our preparing groundwork for the public hearing. And I, I think the first step of that, which I've had a chance to discuss maybe individually, is to have, not tonight, because after all, residents have only seen the drawings at most for the last day and a half, but to schedule a town forum, which I would suggest we try to do by the end of this month, to permit residents more time to review things and give us their comments, and that we defer our own deliberations until after we've had that chance to hear from residents. If that's something that makes sense to people. And just to put out a date, because I forgot it, I was wondering whether Monday evening, the thirtieth, I think it's the thirtieth?
It's a Monday, yes.
There's, might be a date that would be workable for people. And it seems to me we could probably just do it by Zoom. If that's all right, and just allow residents that opportunity.
Are you thinking, I think it's a great idea. Are you thinking presentation by Corso? Just total?
No, no, no. I don't think we need, I think Corso's presentation is complete. But I think this would be the chance for us to hear from residents who've now had the opportunity to review the package more completely and to raise with us any issues or thoughts they have before we go into our deliberations.
So, so Mayor, I will not be in town, but I, if we do it via virtual, then I'll, I'll figure something out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Visiting family, so.
Sure. Good to take a break from that family to join this family. So is that all right with folks? Will we try to do that? Grace? So that, that I think is plenty of times. We ought to get a town crier out, Todd, tomorrow to, to announce that that's what we're going to do. And then I think hopefully over the next several days, we'll find out just when the public hearing will be held. And then that, we, once we have that, that should guide us as to when we, as a town council, will need to pull together our thoughts. One point which Joy raised with me earlier today is that the February town council meeting is February eighth. So that would be literally just, well, nine days after the public forum we're talking about. So if we're not under undue pressure to get comments back to the, to the planning staff, that might be a sensible time for us to have our own deliberations. If we do need to work faster than that, we may have to see if there's some way we could have a work session or something. But I think we can decide that once we know more about the schedule. But this'd be good to let the residents know when we'd like to hear from them. And obviously, what, any, any forum is not preclude people sending in their own comments in writing, which we're always happy to have.
Just clarification. Our, we're, we're shooting for a submission or a letter to the planning staff. That's not the hearing. We need to have our comments.
You're correct. There are two, there are two, there are two things, there are two different things.
Right.
One would be any comments we wish to register with the planning staff in time for them to incorporate in their final report to the planning board. Separately, would be testimony we would give directly to the plan.
Right.
We can do both.
Right.
Okay, good. Anything else on Corso? All right. Turning next to the farm women's market project. The, Irene and I, every other week, we have a phone call among the four partners for this project. The partners being the town, the county, basically the Department of Transportation that owns the parking lots, the Parks Department, which everyone's understanding the Parks Department is not a county agency. It reports to the, I always get the acronym wrong, the National, the Maryland National Capital, thank you, the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. Thank you. And, and the, and then the fourth partner, of course, are the developers, EYA and Bernstein Management Corporation. And at the discussion that we had a week ago Wednesday, this past Wednesday, the, the developers made a couple of statements. First of all, they're now looking much more carefully at all the aspects of the project and what has to be done. There's a general feeling that the very first thing that'd be great to be able to undertake is undergrounding of the utilities, which is very important in many places in order for them to be able to actually build the project, but also is a portion of the project that does not have to go through site plan and a lot of permitting. It can sort of have its own, own trajectory. They also believe that costs have gone up and that the undergrounding is more expensive than they had put in the budget. And there's general inflation. That's one reason. Second reason is the, that the, they've heard now from Pepco that Pepco will want to do the work themselves. They will want to plan it. They want to build, do the undergrounding. So there will not be the opportunity for competitive bidding, which might otherwise have been the case. And thirdly, Pepco standards are stricter or higher perhaps than what the developers had anticipated in respect to the integration of the wires that are undergrounded to the wires that then go back up, you know, above, above the street. So cost overruns. They have, would like to pursue some, some help from the state. I don't think we have any problem in asking the state for help. But I guess what I wanted to discuss with, with, with all of you is that I think we have to be very mindful about the costs, and we have to be mindful about the priorities as we in the town see them. I think in our past discussions, we've always been very clear about how important the parks are and the amenities in those parks. And we want to make sure that there's funding for that. We know that a fair amount of the undergrounding is, is necessary for the construction. But on the other hand, and some of you have raised this in past council meetings, not necessarily all of it. Some of it is kind of a nice to have for aesthetic reasons, but not necessarily essential. And so one, one thought which I brought up with the developers is, do we really need to underground the wires along Forty-Sixth Street? Those are five poles. They sit between the curb and the sidewalk, so they're not infringing on the park. Could they stay? Would that be a way to potentially manage the cost of this a little better? So what I wanted to ask, if there's support, that we can go back to the developers and ask them to submit some different packages for the undergrounding of the utilities. One, which could still include the scope as they had envisioned it, but another would include a scope that would delete that section on Forty-Sixth Street so that we can understand what could be the cost savings arising from that change. So I'm not asking that we support it. I'm just asking that we collectively want that information so we can make an informed decision down the road as to whether we would believe it should, just should still be done, or whether we would agree that it would, it would be sensible and prudent action to, to delete that. So that is, that's one issue that I wanted to raise. The other one, also having to do with undergrounding utilities, is the, and Irene, you've been very involved in this in discussions from the Public Services Committee's perspective, which is that, that there are, I guess, three poles along the east side of Forty-seventh Street in Elm Street Park. And, and when all of us who looked at the design for the surface Capitol Crescent Trail, which has to, we all know half of it's been completed, but there's still more that has to be built, and a portion that has to run along Elm Street Park, that there'd be more flexibility and potentially more, a better way to design that, that surface trail if those poles were eliminated and the wires were put underground. So again, without our taking a position, could we also ask the developers to give us a, a estimate for what it would cost to add that undergrounding to the package of undergrounding, which would be done anyway in respect to the parks project, so that we can know what that delta is, and then potentially consider how that could be added? So those are really the two things that I wanted to ask, if that would be acceptable to everyone to go forward with.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could just add, I mean, I, I really appreciate the way you're framing this, and I, I think that's the right way for us to engage at this stage is to, you know, the goal of this, at the end of the day, is, is a high-quality park on those lot areas and, and something that, that we know will benefit the community, Bethesda, et cetera. So yeah, safeguarding that, if that means undergrounding is what falls by the wayside, then that's what, that's what has to happen. So yeah, I, I, I concur with where, where you're going on that. I don't want us to just be underwriting utility, undergrounding, and, and that be the end of it, and then we don't end up having enough resources for a nice surface park.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I completely like, I like the idea of separating the utility discussion from the park discussion. This, what residents have been thinking about in terms of what our contribution would be towards this project, you know, park amenities, if you will. I do have a question, though, about when we would really get this information from about the delta, right? Because my understanding from the last conversation, please let me know if I, if I misunderstood, was that there would be the hiring of a dry utility consultant that would give some sort of, I don't want to say back of envelope, but just an approximate cost associated with what's, could be going on along Forty-Sixth Street, and then as you make your way down to Willow, towards Wisconsin. But yet Pepco still needs to, you know, fill in the rest of the blanks. And Pepco is not necessarily responsive when it comes to providing estimates that one can count on. So if, if we were, I agree with the approach, but if we were to agree to this, what's the timing of actually finding out this information that would be aligned with all the other moving parts associated with this, you know, discussion?
It's, it's a good question. I can't answer that. It's going to take some time. One of the, we're in discussion. Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Well, I'll try to speak closer. Is that? Okay. All right. Thank you, Beth. We'll try to speak louder. The, there are some additional steps that have to be taken before they can actually go to Pepco with what is really needed. They have to know how much electricity is required by these buildings, and also how much they want to have, for example, with charging stations for EVs and things like this. So they're, they have to do some work themselves, and that's going to take a couple of months. So there's still a little bit away before they can even present to Pepco what they would want Pepco to be able to, to do. But I, I think we just have to lodge our requests and say, and essentially put our partners on notice that we want to be, have some flexibility here in terms of thinking about how much undergrounding is really needed, and we are not on automatic pilot, that automatically everything is done that was in the initial scope a long time ago.
And we're not on automatic pilot to contribute.
Right. Yes. The other, the other thing on Corso is we're also pushing where we can to, on two agreements that the town is very much involved with. One is a funding agreement with the county in respect to the money that the county would get from us to help pay for the garage and associated undergrounding. And then the much larger component is, is associated with a contract that we would have a contract agreement we will have with the. agreement we will have with the Parks Department for the money that we would be using to support the parks. Uh, and, uh, and associate undergrounding there. So, uh, those are two different funding agreements. Uh, we have received a first draft initially from the county, which we found unacceptable. We pushed back, rewrote it. They came back having accepted most of our changes, but still two things we objected to. We've now gone back to them again, uh, and we're waiting for a further response. Uh, we were the initial drafters of the agreement going to the, uh, Parks Department. And I shared that with everybody just before the holidays. Uh, the lawyer for the commission, uh, has been on vacation and is only back this week. Uh, and Todd, I think you heard, I guess we, we, we don't yet have a date for when we're going to hear back from the Parks Department, but we hope sometime next week. Is that right? Is that what Mitty said? Todd's, I don't see him. I guess he had to leave. Uh, so anyway, that's, I don't have anything for.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, okay. Yeah. So anyway, those two agreements we're working on, but our partners have to come back to us with comments. Uh, we'll have another discussion this coming Wednesday. Uh, and, um, I think that's about it for the parks. Uh, turning to Zimmerman Park.
Sorry, I just had one, one thing that just occurred to me. So we, the town entered into an agreement with the county, a memorandum of understanding with the county with respect to the Capitol Crescent Surface Trail. And the way the agreement was, um, uh, put together, it, it left open the, the tunnel question. And I'm wondering, given today's, uh, uh, magazine, I'm sorry, newspaper, whatever, article about the, the increase in costs as it relates to the construction of the tunnel, is it worth going back to the county to see, you know, is there, is there, this is along the lines of this utility discussion? Is there something that can be done since we're still like in the design, final design phase so that we can inch, you're, we're inching on this side about the burying the utilities. Can we also, can we also work on the other end on the county side to, to help them see the light about this?
Well, it's a fair question. I think the Department of Transportation to date, as you know, has sort of said, we, we've been told the tunnel will be built, so we have to keep planning for it. But in light of Elrich saying he doesn't even want it in the upcoming CIP, which is a six-year budget. Uh, it does beg the question, when is the time to sort of get real and realize that?
Yeah.
For the long time here, we're just kind of the surface trail and let's stop pretending that something else is going to get built.
You know, building on Irene, can, can we segue into that, uh, the tunnel discussion and?
Sure. If you want to raise it now.
Yeah, no, I just, I think it might be worth dusting off some of the old memos and letters from a couple of years ago that we, um, used i- in this go around with uh, the county executive not wanting to fund the tunnel along the purple line and then getting pushed back and, and, uh, getting that funded by the county council. So, um, we're gonna have to do it again, I think, sort of get back into that, that rhythm of, of, um, now asking for them to, to reinsert in, in, I guess, in a supplemental funding of some sort to get the county council to override or to change the budget request. So we have, we have, we have the, the muscle memory of that. And I think we're probably, it's probably going to be, in addition to what you're suggesting, Irene, we're gonna have to get the other council members on board. And there are all these new members on board. Uh, new members in the council now, uh, seven, six, seven new members in the county council. So we're gonna have to do a lot of education as well as to why that expenditure should go forward.
But do we want to push for it? I mean, I understand that, y- you know, we've all seen the improvements on the, the, across Wisconsin and into Bethesda with respect to dedicated bike lanes. It's safe. It's, it's aesthetically pleasing. Uh, once the, the, the CCST running through Elm Street, you know, that too, I'm sure will be as, as high quality. Do we as a council want to consider, I'm sorry, continue to push for a tunnel? I, I think that if, if this is just me talking, that, that I'd rather push to take a portion of what would have been put in for the tunnel and bury these lines along 47th. It'd save a lot more money. It'd still have more room. It'd be safer. Um, and ki- kind of, this tunnel's not going to happen.
Well, well, the tunnel could happen. If the, and the funding is, th- there, there are funds available. There are funds. It's, I, I mean, I think what the executive is doing is, is the, the technical term is Washington monumenting, which is essentially moving money towards one need, expecting that there will be pushback to add money for the tunnel. But it's a great question, right? I mean, we should have potentially another discussion.
Discussion because I, the, the cost has increased.
Yeah.
I, I think several things have changed. The cost increase has gone from what once was $30 million to $85 million. Yeah. So this is a massive increase.
Yeah.
And, um, speaking just very personally, but I, I, uh, first things first, I want those parks. And I, I, I think our message needs to be really focused and make sure because there probably will be cost overruns for those parks. We probably will need some more money. And, and I just think if more money is needed, we should just be focused on making sure those parks get funded. Uh, so I'm concerned about dilution of our message too.
At, at this stage, we're on the record in support of the tunnel. So if, if we're gonna make a change, it has to be a change to reverse that.
Right, right, right. But I think that is something we ought to have a discussion about at another council meeting. Rich, is there anything or Joy, you want to add to this?
I did, I, I do want to, when we sent the memo in support of the tunnel, we had not yet received the final drawings from the transit partners about what the tunnel under the, uh, the subway tunnel was going to look like. And there was always in doubt whether there was going to be a pedestrian access. And it, it, as it is right now, there is pedestrian access from the Capitol Crescent Trail through the tunnel, through the metro.
Purple line.
Purple line tunnel. There. So that, that, that path, the, the Capitol Crescent Trail path for, it's essentially would be for bikers.
Correct, correct. Okay.
That's what, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Uh, for the benefit of everyone, we're talking about is, is a tunnel that would go underneath, um, cut through that very small pocket park from Elm, but yeah, B and go underneath the building, large building there and underneath Wisconsin, go underneath the first block of Elm Street and pop up inside of the park. That's the tunnel we're talking about. Long planned, long contemplated as a underground way for the, for the Capitol Crescent Trail to proceed along with the surface trail. But this is what has now become a very expensive proposition. So, okay, uh, moving on to Zimmerman Park improvements. Yes, it was. Dave, tell us what's happening.
What has happened with Zimmerman? Um, I guess when last we spoke, uh, we had you put your, yeah, pull up. Yeah, I guess we had done additional infiltration testing as requested by the county. Uh, we got the results of that infiltration testing back and they were mediocre. Um, so the county requested that we make a few modifications to the landscape infiltration system that was proposed. Uh, so it had to be enlarged slightly. Um, we've resubmitted those to the county uh, for preliminary stormwater concept approval, uh, which we have not yet gotten. Um, but our engineer expects that we'll probably get it in the next few days. You know, we addressed all of the comments that they gave us. So there's no reason it shouldn't be approved. Beyond that, uh, Tolbert and I met with, uh, the landscape architect that works with the engineer to identify new planting beds and locations for, for improvements to the plantings. And I know that entryway monument at the corner, um, is going to be demolished and, and be replanted. So.
I'm sorry, the what's going to be demolished?
Uh, the area where the entryway sign is. Um, because of the alignment of the sidewalk and the need to create a drainage swale
Right.
that connects through that curb, um, we'll have to replant that area. Um, and there's landscape infiltration devices that will need plantings, um, or possibly replant the existing rain garden with new plants. Um, and so the landscape architect is working to put those planting plans together while simultaneously the engineer is, you know, finalizing, I guess, the plans for all of the hardscape as far as the materials, the construction drawings, um, and then the furnishings that are going to be proposed. Um, and so we are planning to meet with him probably at the end of next week to sort of get a comprehensive package that will provide feedback to, and then they're hoping to get us sort of final plans at the, during the first week of February, uh, that will share with the council just to get your blessing before we send it out for, for procurement and bidding for installation, like I said, hopefully later this spring.
If we, on that schedule, if we get plans and we review them in our February meeting, then you would go out to bid at that point?
Yeah, we, we should be able to ride an existing contract that either the Parks Department has or the county has. Um, and with one of the contractors that does the work is DNF Construction, who has done all of the town's concrete work. Um, so we're hoping that they'll be able to, to ride the county contract and have them, you know, agree to do the work under those contract specifications.
And in that case, when would the work start?
I guess depends a lot on their availability. Um, you know, they're busy and running crews. Um, but you know, usually for something like that, you know, if they have three or four weeks lead time, they can find somebody that can, can work on it.
So I'm sorry, so when, when do you think the work could actually begin?
Optimistically, April, probably realistically, probably May.
Okay. And take three or four months to, to do, or what, what's the schedule, do you think?
Probably. Yeah, probably four or five, I would say.
Four or five months. Okay. So wait fall, we might be able to have it.
Yeah, I would think that probably the construction would happen sort of over the summer and then, you know, we'd be able to put the new trees in, get the turf established in the fall, once the temperatures drop a little bit.
Sounds good. Any, any questions that anyone has? Uh, I would just recommend that when we get the plans, uh, that we ought to have, um, either through the forecast or town crier, put those plans out there again and just rerun the commercial and what's going on and what's, I just think it's, it's already been quite a while. It'll be even a longer timeframe before,
Yeah.
uh, before it's out. But I think before construction starts, we want to remind everybody
Sure.
what's it all, what it, what it is all about and, and, uh, make sure no one's surprised when they suddenly see that.
Yeah. And there's going to have to be some outreach to the residents that live there so they know.
Well, much, yeah, certainly who live there, but just generally the town should be brought back up to speed on
Sure.
what's envisioned there and where we are in it. That's good. Okay. Great. Good.
I guess, uh, not on the agenda, uh, but Todd asked me to guess, give an update on Coquelin Run.
Yes.
Um, so I guess we've shared the plans with all of the adjacent homeowners, um, that own the parcels where the work will be done. Uh, they're all on board. Uh, we've drafted a construction and maintenance easement um, that they've sort of agreed to in principle. And we've also filed, um, yesterday, uh, the joint permit application with Maryland Department of the Environment and federal, a federal agency, uh, that reviews it since it's in a flood plain and does involve, you know, realigning the creek. Um, so that joint permit application, once those reviewing agencies receive it, it starts a 45-day clock for them to review it and get comments back to the town. Um, so we're sort of started that window. And then depending on what comments they have, which shouldn't be extensive because it's such a small project in their world, um, you know, we'll get the approvals, um, we'll get the maintenance agreements and easements executed. And then, you know, we'll take that out for bid or again, ride a county or parks contract to do that work. Um, so we're hoping to get that done probably. You know, sort of in the same time window as the Zimmerman Park project, possibly a little bit later. Uh, but it should be done this calendar year, certainly.
Great, good. And we're using ARP and money for that. So.
Correct.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, um, the Rosemary Garden proposal. Uh, Joy, can we turn it over to you to talk to us about this?
Certainly, yeah. I'm, uh, very pleased to talk with, uh, with my colleagues about, um, a proposal that came from the Climate and Environment Committee um, to, uh, upgrade the, what is now called Rosemary Triangle, um, add some new plants and possibly, uh, some amenities, um, in that space, um, to make it, uh, more inviting and, and contemplative space. Um, the Climate and Environment Committee has been talking about this for quite a while. Um, I'm going to turn the floor over to Sheila Blum, who has been leading a working group um, within the committee on, um, improvements to the garden. And then I'm going to ask, um, town staff, uh, to comment on the, um, on the proposal. You all have received a copy of the proposal, so we don't need to read through it line by line. Um, so, uh, let me ask Sheila Blum to come to the podium, um, to discuss the, uh, the proposal that the committee has, uh, submitted to the council.
Okay. Sheila, please.
On behalf of the town's Climate and Environment Committee, I want to thank the town council for considering our proposal for renovation of Rosemary Triangle and creation of what we like to call Rosemary Garden. I'll just mention a few of the motivations for this project, assuming you have had a chance to look at the concept paper. We have a wonderful town, as we all know, but we have very few parks and public spaces and won't have more for a number of years. And uh, one could say that one of those spaces, Rosemary Triangle, has not reached its full potential. So our committee proposes that the town take this opportunity to enhance this third of an acre space on the southeast side of town, heighten its natural beauty, make it more inviting and enable residents to socialize beyond the perimeter sidewalk around the triangle. Placement of one or more benches and some outdoor art could facilitate increased enjoyment of a Rosemary Garden, what we like to call Rosemary Garden. At the same time, the town can reflect its environmental goals in the renovation by removing invasive plants, of which there are many on the plot, and creating an attractive landscape redesign for the park utilizing native grasses, perennials and shrubs, which have many benefits. For one thing, native grasses could help mitigate runoff issues in that area, which have been reported by neighbors. The committee also envisions involving town residents, town children, and possibly Chevy Chase Elementary School students in appropriate ways in the project. And another major goal is increasing awareness about native plants and environmentally friendly landscaping while creating a model sustainable community garden. An important note that we want you to, the council to know is that in October, Joy White and several committee members met with a number of town residents who live near the triangle to tell them about our vision and to hear their thoughts and concerns. Primary concerns expressed were retention of the perimeter sidewalk and the retaining the trees on the site. We listened carefully to that and other feedback, and most of it was reflected in the final concept paper. In addition, the committee investigated whether there were any ADA requirements or recommendations that we should take into account for this project. And we also considered thoughts and ideas provided by Thornton Matheson, who created a detailed plan for renovation of the triangle a few years ago. And ideas by Backyard Bounty, who, a member of our committee spoke with recently. So the Climate and Environment Committee now asks the town council to approve its proposal and to have an RFP issued by the town staff to interested and appropriate landscape design firms. And we will have a much better idea of what a renovated and enhanced Rosemary Garden could look like when responses to such an RFP are received. But it's the hope and expectation of the Climate and Environment Committee that in the end, the result will be a beautiful and usable space that all in our town can appreciate and enjoy. And in closing, speaking of joy, the enjoy part of enjoy, we would like to express our great appreciation to our excellent town council liaison, Joy White, and also to our departing committee chair, Dan Cohosey, who is moving to DC unfortunately. So thank you. And Christina and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks.
Do you want Dave to speak first? Uh, Joy, did you want Dave to follow up or should we open up the questions?
Um, I would actually like, uh, like Dave to talk about, um, what, so Sheila mentioned that, um, they did get some feedback from neighbors um, and incorporated some of the ideas that Thornton Matheson had developed a few years ago. But I would like to, um, have. But I would like to have Dave speak to any feedback that staff had on the proposal.
Sure, I guess Talbert, Todd and I reviewed the proposal. I think there's certainly a project there, you know, if the town feels like it's something that you want to proceed with. And I'm not sure that we can draft an RFP based on the proposal without getting a little bit more preliminary information first.
Right.
So, you know, I would recommend if the council decides they want to take it to the next step, probably hiring a surveyor to come out and do a boundary survey of the property. That would include, I guess, the topography, a tree inventory, utility locations.
I'd like to think we've learned something from our experience with Zimmerman that we better make sure we know where those utilities are.
And then once we get that, you know, staff or staff in consultation with the council or staff in consultation with the committee can look at it, you know, that'll identify accessibility issues, possible need for some grading changes, because the grades there are really unfriendly, which is probably why it's largely unutilized at this time.
Right.
Unfortunately, grade changes may result in the removal of, you know, some of the non-specimens, but, you know, then there's sort of a trade off there that needs to be evaluated before you can actually decide this is what this park project is going to look like. So that's where we would recommend, you know, if the council decides to proceed, you know, have a surveyor come out and, you know, get an engineer to take a look at it and sort of give us three or four concepts of ideas that are possible that that can then be fleshed out further to, you know, really pin down a fine planting plan with native plants and the sculptures and the benches that are desired.
Right, thank you.
Can I ask Dave a technical question on that? Is there a function or what what function does the triangle play right now in terms of environmental like role? Does it? Is it a sponge for water runoff? I mean, is there like just beyond beyond? And by the way, thank you for doing this and I love it. I think it's great. Just want to get a better feel for like, what's the purpose or the use of the that space right now beyond the the human use?
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of, I mean, it's a stormwater island, you know, it's because the center of it's depressed. You know, you probably get a little bit of water that falls onto the sidewalks that will run off to the streets, but any water that lands in the middle of it, you know, stays within the boundaries of the park. There is a storm drain inlet there that, you know, it the low spot that everything sort of drains to and it can raise that water into the public storm drain system. You know, there's a fair amount of infiltration, but any overflow does go there. So there could be a chance to disconnect that stormy inlet, you know, probably design it so there's more infiltration, but it doesn't doesn't really take water from offsite and it doesn't also discharge water off the park.
Right.
Sure.
Sure, please.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, the question was whether it's possible to, I guess, raise the elevation of the storm drain inlet and fill the park to make it flatter and more usable. And the answer to that is it's possible, but it would require the removal of all the trees. I mean, you can't fill around the trees there without causing them to to die.
Right, right.
So.
Questions at this point?
I I like the idea of improving it. I walk by there almost every day and it's in the springtime, it's lovely, even though those plantings are are non-native, some of them are still beautiful. And I was wondering, can we, is there a way for us to kind of segregate elements of the plan so we can get first get an idea of what it would cost to? Well, first of all, get all the preliminary stuff done to make sure you can do anything and then talk about what it would cost and what it would look like with just changing out the vegetation. Then a next phase would be, you know, adding improvements and whatever. Is that contemplated? Is that what you're asking would be asking the conceptual design person to do?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, if it's a matter of, you know, installing a bench and replacing the existing plantings with native plantings, you know, we could do, we could find a place to put a bench probably next to the existing sidewalk and we could, you know, replace the planting beds. You know, without any real study at all, we could just have our landscape contractor, you know, we could work with somebody to put a plan together and have that done. You know, it's when you're sort of activating the inside of the park and you're talking about adding sculptures and trails and pathways and making drainage improvements, you know, you can spend as little or as much money as you want putting those improvements in.
Well, I mean, I guess what I'm asking is that before we go, I mean, I'd like to see segments, not, you know, we're going to build this out to look like this.
Yeah.
I'd like to see some some elements defined what the cost of that would be, what the additional elements would be and how much they would cost and you know, a complete renovation with all the bells and whistles and sculptures and everything and what that would cost.
Yeah, so once you have a base map of what the current conditions are, I mean, you can take that and, you know,
Develop an RFP.
develop an RFP based on budget numbers and goals and, you know, where those two things sort of intersect, you can come up with a project and send it out.
All right.
Yes, so thank you again for for putting this together. So I had just a few general questions before I go into my specific questions. So there were a lot of lessons learned from implementing Dennison Garden. And what I I wanted to get a better understanding, I also saw Thornton's design back in the day. Is your vision to implement Thornton's design? So what is your vision as a committee? Like what what? So let's pretend it's a year from now and it's your perfect space. What does that? I couldn't understand what that perfect space was for you for you all. Can you talk to that?
Could you go to the microphone, please? Thank you, Sheila.
It would be a space that would be more accessible than it is now. It would be more used than it is now. And it would be more beautiful than it is now. And I appreciate that some neighbors or people feel that they enjoy the current plants that are there in springtime, blooming time, but I think we can even enhance that, make it even more beautiful. Get, as I said, get rid of invasives and kind of and make the environment more of a priority, which it really needs to be. And we might even, we could have Thornton has put in a lot of thought into this, but I I see the an RFP being open to other interested and qualified people. Maybe Thornton would want to submit a proposal or not.
Well, Thornton's design was a very active park. So that was my next question. Are you you say more that it's like more accessible, more used? Is it an active or a more passive?
Good question. I think neighbors kind of indicated and the committee felt in terms of active, no, we felt it should be a quieter, more relaxing, more contemplative space for neighbors, primarily adults to socialize with each other, perhaps sit on a bench and talk and chat and look at a beautiful look at the nature around them. And and the neighbors, when we talked to them and said, well, what would you think about some kind of some amenities for children? There was strong dissent, there was strong opposition to that, such a thing. And anyway, we had the committee had always thought, well, the Rosemary, the elementary school playground is very close by.
Right.
So perhaps that takes care of that. And it's not a very large space. And some of the spaces are not as usable as others because of the grading.
So you you mentioned that you wanted it to be a model of of a sustainable garden. So were you thinking a line that would be aligned with the other side of the town with Dennison Garden? Or would it have a different model of sustainability?
I'm going to let Christina.
Okay.
I mean, I think we would look to RFPs for some ideas. Frankly, though, as a as a resident of the town, I'm not, I'm not, it's not been conveyed clearly to me how Dennison is a sustainable garden. Okay, so I do think education and outreach is important. And we do envision, if there's no objection to perhaps some a sitting area for students, I mean, sustainability would be in terms of the plants attracting pollinators and and bird life, but I do think that needs to be explained more. I don't think that's, you know, really evident when you walk down to the Dennison Garden.
Okay.
But but we're open.
Okay, and then my last question is, so a long time ago, Chevy Chase Elementary School, like they're in their in their courtyard area, there was an active effort by certain residents of the town to engage so that there would be, it would be like kind of a learning space, more so for like plants than say sustainability, but it was kind of a learning space and that kind of fell by the wayside and that particular courtyard is not being utilized to it say, like it's being used for other purposes, let's just say. So although it's 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 mentioned here about engaging with the elementary school, I was wondering if anyone on the committee has actually spoken with anyone at the elementary school to see what they're interested in. Okay.
Not yet.
Okay.
I guess we wanted more clarity on how we're moving forward.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Go ahead, Joel.
Just piggybacking on Irene's question, just one more question. Any thoughts about dogs? Dog park space, not dog park space. I'm not suggesting it, I'm just wondering, has that come up in discussions? It will, it shows up every now and again in our park issues.
I don't think there's space on a third of an acre for a dog park, but I would certainly hope we would not say a dog's not allowed. Probably dogs on a leash. I know this is.
They're now on a leash.
They're dog parks somewhere.
My my, what I'd like to understand, first of all, I'm very supportive of doing some more and I appreciate the work you're undertaking and glad that you've gone back to Thornton's work and tried to pull together the other people have thought about that. All that's very good. I will say that that I like flowers and even if some flowers are deemed to be invasive, they're pretty and I hope I don't, I know that you explained a very color colorful garden and that's great, but I'm I'm just expressing, it doesn't necessarily mean if by invasives, it means we take out all the existing plantings or I hope that's not the case, but you'll, we'll work on that down the road. The main thing I want to understand is as a matter of process, what exactly the RFP would be targeted to accomplish? The the we use RFPs usually here when the design work. Let me back up. If we if we are engaging as we did with Zimmerman, we actually went through a couple of landscape architects. We chose a landscape architect who an RFP, but but there was no really designed content to the selection. It was the person's credentials and their and the cost of their their work. And frankly, we didn't make very good choices. We actually ended up with two that didn't turn out very well. And then we finally went to to Azar Associates and we now are getting some very good work. But it's I what I heard, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Sheila, is that you want an RFP which is more of an invitation to different landscape architects to show their ideas? And then we would take the the ideas they present to us as the basis in which we would choose one of them, I guess, to actually execute the work. Have I have I understood that properly? Okay, all right. And I guess I just want to know if if we feel that we can is that the way that the landscape community would respond? In other words, would they say, would we would they, would they say, if we went out for a competitive process, three or four different landscape architects and said, do some preliminary work, show us what you think you could do here? Would we actually get responses back that we could then use? Or would they, would they say, wait a minute? You've got to first choose me and then I'm going to do the work with with the design. I'm just trying to get a sense of what we could really expect from the RFP process as you envision it.
I haven't been directly involved in such a process before Barney, but Mr. Mayor, excuse me.
You can call me Barney, that's fine.
Everyone, but I would imagine if we gave a certain number of parameters and perimeters to them, the only thing they might say is what is your budget? Which is something we haven't gotten into specifically yet. But I would imagine that it's a limited space. And if we we talked about, first of all, I think they would come back, I imagine they're coming back with ideas and that we would choose a design, I design a firm that gave the ideas that appealed to us the most and that we thought were the most
Okay.
attractive.
I I like that. I I'd love that to be the case. Don't get me wrong, because I think that would actually give the council and the and the residents and the committee the greatest opportunity to assess different plans and be pleasantly surprised. It's some ideas that perhaps nobody else had thought of. That'd be great. But I just want to make sure that if we embark on that process, that the the prospective responders would themselves be willing to do that upfront work as part of their their responsiveness to the RFP. I'm just curious about that.
Maybe we could make some initial. Well, I was going to say for Dennison Garden, what what happened, the process for that was we we knew the budget because it was as a result of a of a bequest that was made to the town. And we had a general idea that we wanted a sustainable garden and we invited three, three landscape architects to do a walkthrough of different areas around the town, one of which was the Rosemary Triangle. And then there were a couple of others. But we gave a general, like, we're looking for the ability to, in terms of parameters, we're looking for the ability to educate people on sustainable, you know, aspects of the different issues with with gardens and how do that? What ended up happening was that we we liked the ideas coming from one of the three landscape architects and then had to enter into a contract with that particular landscape architect who would then go through all of the details.
So so just, sorry, but just so actually, in other words, they did actually come up with ideas upfront as part of the RFP process?
Well, we paid for it is my is my point is that there was, there was a just a general set of of ideas that the committee had. And then upon and then did a kind of a walkthrough with three different landscape architects who gave their, you know, kind of off the cuff ideas for what how they envisioned the different spaces.
And on that basis.
On that basis, we entered into a, I don't even know what the the legal word for it, but like exploratory contract, if you will, that now they were paid by whatever the the deliverable being these kinds of construction details that then were ultimately put out to an RFP.
Oh, that sounds fine. All I'm getting at is that that the RFP process would cause the 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 bidders to actually put some thought into what the content would be, even if it's a very preliminary way before we make the selection.
There was no, oh, so sorry, there was no like, this is what my idea is, it was more in terms of the initial contract, it was I'm going to work with you so that we can come up with those ideas and details. Maybe a tent, yeah.
Yeah, I wonder whether we wouldn't say to keep to the spirit of what Sheila and the committee are talking about, we wouldn't say we have three contractors who are on a shortlist, we're willing to pay each of you X to do, come back with some designs, conceptual design, and then we're going to choose the one we like the most and the X would not be very much money, it would be very, very preliminary. But at least it would mean that we would have something to make a judgment about which architect we thought had the most interesting ideas. Go ahead.
I want I I want to understand what Dave was saying is that if I were a landscape architect and I didn't know what was under that.
Oh, so his work comes first. Oh, absolutely. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to leave that out. That work comes first no matter what.
Before anything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That comes first.
Right.
So we get a baseline of what we know, what the site is, it's as is. Configuration.
And I think that's all we have to, that's the only guidance you're looking for tonight is to let Dave do his, do that work, right? But I'm, I'm looking ahead past that point.
Right.
To how we'd actually organize an RFP process and get meaningful input from our bidders that we could then rely on, you know, help us in making a selection as to which bidder should really do the full work.
And then also from a timeline perspective, thinking about budgets, you know, now as, as you mentioned, the, the time that we're developing the budget for next fiscal year. So the window, if we're going to get to that stage where there's an actual numbers, number provided, this is the right window, but we want to get this sort of clear before, like by April, I would say, or March at some point. I'm also a question, totally off the wall, but is, is this an ARPA project?
I was just going to ask that.
It could be.
You're the ARPA person. Is this, uh, can we fit this in the world?
Infrastructure improvement project.
Um, I think that would depend on what kind of infrastructure may be warranted on this space. And we won't know until we get that initial sort of engineering assessment of the space as it is now.
As a practical matter, we're able, I'm sorry, please go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. So because, yeah, because potentially, so let's just say for a moment that, you know, if there were recognized stormwater management issues there that could be improved upon, an expenditure that would make an improvement to treat and divert water would be coverable under ARPA.
Okay, good.
And a number of good, good questions that, that were raised and I'll just respond really quickly to a few of them. Barney, you raised very good points about what landscape designers might be willing to do during an RFP phase. And I guess if a, if an RFP doesn't have real specific design requests as more general as we're envisioning or more open ended, waiting for feedback from the architects, there's only, there's a limited amount they might be willing to do on their own dime. So if, if the town is able to put forth a small amount for the conceptual design phase, I think that's a great idea. I, I understand your wish for colorful garden and your concern that perhaps native plants might not provide that. And I don't think that's an issue. I think we can, we can prove that, that we can have lovely colorful native perennials and other plants, I also, and shrubs. And also I want to differentiate between invasives and non-native plants and native plants. We want to maximize the use of, of native plants in this space as much as possible. But sometimes there are plants, plants that are not native but are not invasive and could have a design purpose and we might want to either retain or utilize a small number of those and not be rigid. And about stages, I want to mention, I want to say that what's in, the way I see it, what's envisioned as amenities that, such as benches, one or more benches for perhaps some outdoor art. I, I, I think when we, when it's looked at carefully, it's something that could perhaps be done at the same time, although we can cost them separately if that's, in fact, we could, if we could request that they be costed separately in any response proposals. But I just want to say regarding art, we might be able to utilize town residents. But on the other hand, I, a quick look at some websites, for example, Etsy, Googling outdoor art, there's some really nice looking metal outdoor sculptures for just three hundred, two or three hundred dollars. So we're not talking that thousands.
Okay, good. Well, thank you all for that work. That's great.
I, I do, I, in terms of the staff's ability to conduct all of this thing, I mean, I, one of my concerns is that their plate's pretty full right now. So is it conceivable within the next three or four months that you would be able to develop the initial work?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, we're going to send that out probably to Clark Azar to, like I said, have the survey done and sort of give us an overview. And then I guess one of the questions probably for the council and the committee to figure out is, you know, for the Dennison Garden, the committee took that design and took, you know, they handed us a completed plan for the park and told us to send it out for bid. So the committee was the liaison with the designer and did all of the review and all of the sort of negotiating back and forth to see what the final product looked like. And so, you know, we're happy to do that and we probably have capacity to do it. It's, I don't think it's a huge project necessarily. But I guess we just need to figure out the coordination between the staff, the committee, council review, outreach to residents, and that can come later on, but it's something that just needs to be defined. So, so there's a, a plan for it.
Let's, let, I think it's a fair question to ask, but let's visit it again after the.
Yeah, and I, I think it's, we can ask the committee to
help out.
Help out with.
Good point. Yep, there's, there's, there's Dave, there's Walton, there's Dave and there's Walton, right?
So can we, can we get, I don't know if it's appropriate for a vote here, but can we get at least a consensus on the council that, that will have staff take the proposal to an engineer, Clark Azar, and have them survey the site and let us know what's possible within the bounds of, of what's been expressed in the proposal. And then that I, I think that'll give us a little bit more information to know how we would like to proceed with this and then start to engage residents in discussions about improvements.
I think that's right. Is there, we have a sense of that consensus? I think so.
Yes.
I think, I don't think you need more than that, Dave, right? We don't take it from above. So that's good.
Okay.
Chris, if you can come up just to the.
Very quick question. Dennison Garden has much more hard, has hardscape. We're not proposing hardscape, but what was the budget for Dennison Garden?
One hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, thanks.
We, we went over it.
We went.
It was like a hundred and twenty at the end or something altogether.
It's nice, for example, to say that we want gravel. It was a disaster when, when storms came through. It, it's, you know, and mulch was all over the place and, and it included the a hundred and more includes also the maintenance costs. So there's.
The end budget was?
Oh dear, we're, we're one fifty plus.
And maintenance?
Maintenance. I don't know the breakdown exactly for Dennison, because it's a part of the entire town contract with Hughes. But what happened was we had a year's worth of maintenance done by the installation company, Backyard Bounty. And then they had to teach, you know, Hughes about all of these different practices. So at this point, they know, and under the supervision of Tolbert Feather. So the, the company knows about this, so at least that part would not need to be included. Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Joy. Thank you very much, Sheila and Chris. Appreciate it. Now take a next step. And, and when you do, finish with this, we can take up the circle. The circle is one of the largest completely unused pieces of property in the town. And there's, I, there really is an opportunity there to do something. Joel, do you want to speak to that?
I just want to make an, an add on comment. I, I, I would love to have somebody look at that circle and, and throw an idea out there. If, if it is looked at to make it i- in a way where the, it, it's accessible by pedestrians that we have walk, you know, walking towards it, walking past something safer around that traffic circle. Thanks, yes, that could be the dog park area, but, uh.
It's also where the bocce courts could go, you know that.
Bocce courts can be good. There's so many good things, but that would be nice.
It has, there really is an opportunity there to be explored as well. So I'd be happy, Joyce, the committee to take that on. Yeah.
Yeah. It's a little island.
She did a lot of work. Exactly. So that would be another place to start with some ideas.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to move on, but thank you all very much. It's great. And turn to, over to you, Irene, to discuss the traffic.
Yeah, so I am going to turn it over to Gautam, if you can come on up here. The, the Public Services Committee, Subcommittee of it, as well as the rest of us, talked about a slowdown and stop campaign. So as we all are merging thankfully from the pandemic, so has the traffic increased. And we'd like to make a proposal for how to, to address that.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Beth, also for being here, who's on the PSC. And Rich, of course, chaired it before and Irene's our liaison now. I think that the general idea is as traffic has picked up, and it's not just speeding, it's also people slow, you know, not stopping at, at stop signs. We want to kind of get ahead of this issues. This is not being built off of lots of reports of accidents or injuries. But, but we sort of see what's sort of happening and we still have cut through traffic. Of course, we had done that analysis two, three years ago. But a lot of the issues we're seeing are, are actually residents. It's, it's in fact the substantial majority. So the idea is to sort of further develop a culture around safety and to try to have this town feel like a village within a big city. We obviously know what's happening all, all on our borders and how developed that's going to be over the next decade. And, you know, there'll be other implications around cut through traffic or, or that kind of thing. But what we want to try to build is this, is this culture around safety. So this takes a couple of different aspects. One is already in our policy around speedhums or stop signs and, and, you know, residents' ability within a block to request those, how they get measured in terms of approval. Council always has the right to, to waive requirements and to approve those safety measures. In particular, the flashing stop signs, we have found, we only have a few of them. I think we have ordered a number more, right? Four or five more. And they're not, you know, particularly expensive, but they seem quite effective. And so, so, you know, the, the idea would be some initials like that have an expense to it. Others around, you know, putting on the, on the town crier and the flyers we get in the mail, putting something around reminders there that obviously is relatively low, low cost. We're hoping to try to have a mascot or something catchy, some, something that's visual that gets people to associate that image with, okay, you know, how I need to be sort of driving in, in this town. And so what we put together was the proposal that showed some of the initiatives. It'd be driven by the PSC, because we know the staff is, is busy, but they would also obviously be quite involved and, and they would execute on some of the things as well that we'd work sort of hand in glove with them. So we put some of the ideas here, others will, you know, get developed by the committee, by the PSC over time. But some, you know, I talked about the mascot of some sort and maybe that's developed by one of the students or adults, kids or adults in town. The ordering, you know, having additional flashing stop signs. And we'd use this traffic study as a guide around where, you know, what makes, or complaints, you know, other data we get from the, you know, police reporting of where we should be putting those stop signs. Or the flashing, you know, the, the, the ones that give you your, your speed. And those we have, you know, like the one right outside here, we have, I think, a few of those also in order. The town crier, I mentioned, you know, again, the focus, I think one area of focus are the two schools, one this and C E C and, and the elementary school, because that is, you know, a little bit more a concern. And there has been more data there from the police. So we will sort of focus as two of those two notable points. And then, you know, the major thoroughfares. And so what we are really seeking is, is if there's kind of feedback, if there are things you'd want to develop, for us to develop further or, or shift in direction. And then if, if not, and you all are comfortable, then we'd start to work as a committee and then with the town office. Yeah, that's the idea.
Yes, why don't you go to the microphone, please, Beth?
Well, I just want to give a bit of history. When Rich was chair, we, we, because we did the traffic study, we were aware that there are people who write to the, to the council and write to the staff and they really wanted a safer community. So we became aware, you all are aware, Dave is aware, that there are people who want to have a safe community. They want to walk their dog. They want to take walks. They don't want to be an elderly person that almost gets knocked over by a car. So we sort of wanted to go in the direction of a positive campaign to elevate that this wants to be, that we want to have a safe community. So it's a way of responding to the people who are, have written to you and then other people who probably want this too, but just haven't ever made their voices heard. So that's why we came up with the mascot and the idea for, this is a safe community within a area that's becoming very congested and unsafe. So that was part of the thinking.
Thank you. Comments, my colleagues?
No, I, I'm, I'm all for it. We've been talking about it for years and we ought to do it. But I, it does raise another issue that I don't want us to forget about is that even our, the, the traffic study we did, our, our committee, when we thought about how to address those, we need enforcement in this town of our traffic regulations. And if you look at those monthly reports from the, the county police, our, our police officers, we stop a lot of people, but we don't ticket them. And I, I just have, there's a fundamental problem here that, I mean, I'm, I'm all for the public being aware and having us come together as a community. But in the, in those people who ignore that, we've got to, we've got to do some enforcement. And it's another topic for another time, but I, I just, I want to fully support the idea of getting our own citizens involved and thinking that we need to have a, a safe community.
I think we've talked, Rich, that's a good point, and we've talked about enforcement for that, exactly for that reason in the committee. And I think one thing, the feedback we've gotten is the police have been, for a variety of, you know, cultural policy reasons, are reluctant to get into a confrontation. And so, and they also are very reluctant to take, I think, at least from the committee, to take any direction around this. And I don't even think they, we can prescribe.
Correct.
I tried, one of the, the recommendations from a year ago was have them ticket, you know, maybe someone gets a warning once or however they track it. And then after that, they get a ticket, whether speeding, running, going, you know, slow, going through a stop sign. And I think we had pretty strong pushback, right?
Now he talks with the person in charge and they, they have to maintain a police relationship with the community, so they have to set their own.
Separate discussion.
Right. So.
It's going to be, we, we need to talk about it separately, but I just want to fully endorse the idea of getting our own citizens involved and, and helping us take a safe community.
Joel?
Yeah, no, I, I, second and third, I think this is great. Thank you. And, and I, I think it's really, it's, it's hitting a, a gap about public messaging that, that, that we need to fill, which is communicating publicly a little more aggressively about this. Because you're right, I mean, my fourteen year old, when I drive her to school, she loves to remark about how basically everybody blows through the stop signs in town. She's watching, right? She sees it. She's not talking about me. And, 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 you know, so, so it's great. One question I had for you, I know the flashing lights that came up today, I'm not sure if they're going to be deployed anywhere specific. But as reading this, and we live, you know, on corner of Walsh and East, and East is a beneficiary of the East Bragley flashing light dynamic. Can we get flashing lights at every major thoroughfare intersection entry point into town? I mean, is that really like a crazy idea? Or is that something that you've thought about or any feedback on that? Because that, it sparked the idea that I know on East.
We haven't gotten into budgetary, we, this commit, this campaign is really about getting sort of a sense. And we haven't tried to put dollars to it. Haven't gotten into budgetary. We, this commit, this campaign is really about getting sort of a sense and we haven't tried to put dollars to it. And I think we certainly want to focus on the things that are really inexpensive and, and that are really built around culture. Or maybe there's aspects of trying to improve the police enforcement that, you know, doesn't cost the, the town anything. Things like stop signs or the, those are obviously, there, there's an expense to that, so.
Well, also what we were discussing as a committee is updating the policy so that right now as a seg, street segment can petition for speed hump and, and the like, maybe we do the same thing for an LED stop sign or, or flashing speed sign, right? So that's another potential discussion point that we can have at a later time to update the policy.
But having them at the entry points of the town would make sense. I think we
Yeah, I mean, it, it certainly has helped reduce the speed of traffic on East without coming from Bragley through down that, that slope down was a nightmare.
Right.
Now it's, it's much better.
And I think you can see at least half a dozen to a dozen where, you know, the, the one right here at Leland, you know, the entry from Wisconsin. I think there are many places, or some of the ones that are four, that are a little bit more complicated, four-way intersections. I think you could see it there as well.
That being said, I, I will ask for the, the council's consideration tonight on, you know, three LED stop signs are already deployed, two are arriving next week and, and the staff is going, you know, they already have a, a running list of, of potential problem areas and, and will select there. I'd like to ask the council for consideration to have four more on order. Four more LED stop, stop signs.
What do they cost each?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred?
Yes, each. And then we do have the radars, uh, speed signs as well, but just to get a little bit ahead of this in terms of whether or not this policy is updated, certainly the town staff will be able to have the resources they need to address.
Do we have to have a formal, a formal change, a vote on the, or is that, is that a consensus issue, Dave? Okay. Any opposition to spending ten thousand dollars for four more speed signs? No, Joy?
No, no. I, I actually, but with respect to the, the communications issue, I would like to raise, you know, something that I've observed. And again, not to beat up on the people who have those electric cars, but they're very quiet. And so I live, you know, close to the intersection of, of Leland and Oak Ridge and have seen on more than one occasion, you know, one of those big electric cars sort of breeze through one of those stop signs. You know, I'm getting older. I'm not quite hard of hearing yet. But twenty years from now, I am not going to be able to hear those electric cars go by. So I think it's, I very wholeheartedly endorse, you know, all the communications that we can do within the town, not only around the schools. Because we've got people who either have mobility issues or, you know, other, other issues that, that are going to affect their ability to hear quieter vehicles. I do like, I, I don't know if we can ask for more police cars stationed at key intersections where there are known to, where people are known to bust through stop signs like at Leland and I think it's Ridge, Ridgewood, or sort of that catty corner there, there's often a police car stopped. Just kind of behind there, trying to catch people who were running through those stop signs. And again, this is Leland that has like the most speed bumps anywhere in the town. So we definitely, we can definitely up our game in terms of communicating that we want to have a much safer environment for our children, for our older residents, for, for all of us.
Yep, good point. I strongly support it as well. I think you might have an interesting opportunity for a campaign to choose a mascot. I wonder whether
Yeah.
It would be a project for BCC students, art class, you know.
We're also going to try to sort of see what else, you know.
That's right.
And what one, a few people have said is if you make it too catchy and it's on lawns, then you draw people's attention away from the road to the lawn. So I think there are a few different aspects.
Work it out, but I, I, I think you've got strong support from the council to do this. That's great. And Barney?
No.
That's not, that's not the case.
The case.
The vast majority, that's the reason why they're citations. But this is not a public discussion for all that, but that's, that's okay. And I really want to move on, folks. So thank you all very much. The last, last item we have. Oh, we do need, Todd's telling us we do need a motion on supplemental. So could I have a motion?
Motion to, for, for purchasing four additional LED stop signs.
Okay, all in favor?
Second.
I.
Oh, second, I've got unanimous consent, done. Okay, thank you. All right. Utility update. Dave, back to you. I had asked Dave to, to give an update, you know, enormous amount of work has been done on the town streets following up on all the huge amount of infrastructure work that Water Company and Pepco had done. But there's still some remaining amount, and I would just thought it would be useful time to give an overview to the council on what we expect to have coming up this spring and summer, which should be the end of it, but at least the end of this cycle of it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it, it ever fully ends.
I know, and I, I really, I caught myself halfway through my statement.
Yes, I guess, starting with the utility work. WSSC, hopefully later this year, is going to be coming in and installing new water mains on Leland Street between Meadow Lane and Connecticut Avenue. The block of Meadow Lane just south of Leland Street and also on Thornapple Street between Meadow and Connecticut. I don't know if you've been across Connecticut, but they've been working over there for a little bit more than a year now. And have had horrible delays based on supply chain issues, getting the pipes that they need to do the work. So the current estimate is that they'll be here in the late summer or early fall. That work's probably going to take three or four months. So we'll coordinate with WSSC and make sure the residents have advance warning and know what to expect, you know, before that work starts. So, but I guess going forward for town street improvements this year, you know, we are planning to pave the block of Oak Ridge Lane between Thornapple Street and Stanford Street. This is a road where the gas main and water mains were replaced about two years ago. And we haven't been able to pave it because of ongoing house construction, because we knew that if we paved it, the utility connections for those new houses would, would tear up the asphalt. So that street is just about ready to go. We've already done concrete repairs, so that should be pretty straightforward. There are four streets that connect between Meadow and Connecticut and also on Meadow Lane between Thornapple and Leland Street that have not had their gas mains upgraded. Washington Gas had told us two years ago, when they finished the last phase, that we should expect those improvements to be made in 2022 or 2023. As of a week ago, they said they're at least five years out and probably ten years out from actually coming in to finish that work. Which means that the roads that we had been holding off making repairs to in anticipation of that work are now probably ripe for, for repairs because they're falling apart a little bit. So our plan is this year that we will resurface Aspen Street between Meadow and Connecticut and then resurface Woodbine Street between Meadow and Connecticut. And then next year, following the WSSC work, we'll resurface Thornapple Street, which we had just paved in 2019. So that'll be sort of repaving our new pavement. And then we'll resurface Leland Street and then the section of Meadow Lane that still is outstanding.
That section of Meadow Lane really needs it. So that's good. That'll be done. So that'll be done this summer, fall?
Uh, that'll be done probably in coordination with the WSSC work.
It might be the summer of 2024.
Yeah, probably what will happen is WSSC will finish up sometime over the winter. We'll come in next spring, make concrete repairs to sidewalks, curbs, gutters, driveway aprons, and then once that work is done, we'll resurface it.
So we're just going to be repaving Oak Ridge to, uh, between Thornapple and Stanford. So this, so this summer, the summer of 2023.
Yes.
Regardless of what calendar year it's in, but it'll all be 2023, but regardless of what fiscal year it's in. What, what will be done this summer?
Yeah, it should be Oak Ridge, Aspen and Woodbine.
That's it, not Virgilia.
Not Virgilia. Virgilia, the pavement's actually not in bad shape. And so
Oh, that's no work scheduled. Got it. Okay. So just those three pieces. All right.
Yeah.
And you've already done this, this section on West, right? That's been done.
Yeah, West actually is not scheduled for work, although with the redevelopment of 4500 Wall Street, there might be some drainage improvements that get made there, which might
Okay.
Adjust some of the
Provide that update for all of us to be aware. Also, we should be aware that we'll be spending, paying very close attention to the stormwater management plans for Corso. Right now, almost all the stormwater, their plan seemed to call for almost all the water to run off the corner down to Meadow Lane. We don't know whether they will, there is currently a smaller stormwater pipe that runs out to Thornapple. But we ought to at least we all, we ought to find out whether they might, at the end of the day, plan to do something more on Thornapple, because obviously that would be a big requiring to tear that street up again.
And I guess just one more thing. I did go around with an engineer just to look at possibly making some little, slightly more extensive drainage improvements on some of these streets that were already scheduled for, for repaving. So we're exploring doing some pretty extensive concrete work on Woodbine, just to help get water off of the sidewalks and into the curbs. And there's a storm drain there that we might, you know, try to direct some of that water into. And we will probably get sort of a general ballpark price to extend a storm drain line from an existing storm drain on Leland out toward Connecticut Avenue. There's an alley between Leland and Aspen that has some pretty bad drainage issues. And there's a bunch of water that comes off of Connecticut Avenue that's caused some flooding down by Meadow.
So we can think, we have, we have the means to do it right.
Yeah, so if we can capture that water at Connecticut, we might be able to even direct some of the water that bypasses Woodbine and, you know, collect it more efficiently. When it's torn up and we're repaving it anyway, it's probably a good chance to do it if we decide we want to expend the funds.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right. No other business? We are adjourned. See you next month.